We call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. Welcome everyone out this evening. Councilmember Steve Bueller has our opening ceremony this evening. Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. Would you all please rise and repeat the pledge of allegiance?
Thank you. I see some scouts here with us today. The senior patrol leader or the senior boy there come to microphone and introduce your troops? Just let us know your name and your troop number and what badge you're working on tonight.
My name is Justin Goodich and I am representing Troop 943 and I'm working on the citizenship in the community.
All right, 943?
Mm-hmm.
Great, welcome. Are you other scouts coming in with 943?
A different one.
A different one, okay. Thank you, sir. Welcome. Could a boy from the new troop that just walked in come to microphone, please? Welcome. Could you please tell us your name and your troop number and what badge you're working on tonight?
My name is Aaron and we're-- my troop is 766 and we're working on the commu--
Wouldn't be citizenship in the community by chance?
Yes.
All right.
And, uh... Communicative.
Good, both of them. Well, great. Well, welcome. Welcome. Thank you for coming. We also want to acknowledge in our audience this evening Councilman-elect Lars Nordfeld and welcome him. All right, item five is we have a special employee of the month recognition going on this month and that is Mr. Dave Choupin who will be recognized by Councilmember Tom Huhn on our behalf.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it very much. Dave Choupin is like, "Here, please can you stand up?" Yeah. I won't embarrass you. I'll just make it very quick here. Thank you. I'll read this letter to you. Most of us use a basement to store things that we never use again or it is a place that stays unfinished for years. But in West Valley City, a hall's basement, there is the most valuable treasure we have, Dave Choupin. He is a one-person communication genius given us all in cell phones and public safety radios. With all the details that he's come with, who knows what Dave of the many phones and radios he has to keep track of and the budgets as well. If the phone or radio goes down, who has our back? Dave does. We came up with our own David Letterman top-ten list of what Dave does. Number 10, experience of 30 years as a police officer. Number nine, radio nut. Number eight, like cell phones. Number seven, good with people. Number six, text calls day and night. Number five, V E C C approved. Number four, knows both sides. Number three, manages invoices. Number two, keep us happy. Number one, no one else would want to do. Please accept this overdue nomination for November's Employee of the Month. Thank you. By Kevin Conde, Mary Cross and Kathy Madden.
Great. Thank you, Dave. Dave, if you could shake all our hands, we would be honored. Scouts, they say many jobs in the future aren't invented yet. Well, about when Dave was going to grade school, they hadn't invented his job yet. It's one that's really kind of come as a need of all the technology and communications devices, everything from us keeping our minutes to our phones. We really appreciate Dave Choupin, kind of the heartbeat of the city in many, many ways. So, thank you so much, sir. And because we think so much of you and your friends and colleagues who've come to applaud you today, we won't even be sad if-- well, we might be sad, but we won't begrudge you for leaving early if you so choose. So, thanks again.
Thank you.
Wait a minute, Dave. Who do you have here with you? I forgot that part. Anyone else you want to embarrass?
Yes, as a matter of fact.
I almost forgot. Shame on me.
This is my wife Jill and she's working and these are a few of her clients that she works with.
Great, welcome.
She has some responsibility with--
Well, we know that Dave is here to back up the city and she's here to back up you, so that's a--
And my brother-in-law, Tim, he's here to--
Great, thanks, Tim.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
We come to item six tonight, which is our comment period. The first part is our public comment period and this is for the public comment of anything that won't have a public hearing later, because we will get that later. Now, I noticed Robert and Richard DeFable signed up. I believe you want to speak on an item coming up in the public hearing. Is that correct? So, let's hold your fire for just a moment and see, is there anyone here who's come to speak on any other item besides those things that are scheduled later on the agenda for a public comment? Okay, seeing none. Six B, city manager comments. Anything today, Mr. Pyle?
No, sir, thanks.
Okay, six C, city council comments. Anyone?
Mayor, I just had a real quick comment. It's last week we had an election and we had a fine slate of candidates out there that put it all on the line for the city and I'm appreciative of each and every one of them. And I think the one thing that makes this election a little extra special is that I was gone the next day and when I got back, I'd say 90 percent of campaign signs are gone. And nothing is more of a mark of a candidate's medal of, you know, not only how much they fight and how many signs they have out there, but, you know, when the fight's over, how quickly they get them down and move on to supporting and governing the city. So, I just wanted to thank the candidates for, you know, that noticeable sign difference in our city.
Great, thank you. Any other councilmembers with a comment this evening? Okay, let's go to item seven tonight. We have a couple of public hearings. Mr. Pyle, could you please introduce the first one? This is related to ZT-6-2013, which is related to ordinance 1344.
Yes, sir, thank you. So, the state, this year in the legislative session, made some change to the regulation of residential facilities for elderly persons and we need to modify ordinance so that we're in accordance with that. There are no substantive changes to our ordinance. It doesn't change the standard of how we treat the use or anything like that. It simply changes the text and the language of our ordinance to be in line with theirs.
Okay, thank you, sir. I will now open the public hearing regarding ZT-6-2013, which is related to ordinance 13-44. Is there anyone who's come to speak on this specific item this evening? You're the next item, I think. Okay, then we close the public hearing again for this specific item and council turn over to you for your pleasure.
Mayor, move for approval of ordinance 1344.
Second. Okay, thank you both. Any further discussion? This one's a relatively easy one for us. We're just doing some cleanup language to get in line with the state guidelines here. All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
That appears to be unanimous. Now, we'll go to our second public hearing and this is related to Z-6-2013, Jenkins Oldham Development, which is related to ordinances 1345 and 13158. Mr. Pyle, if you could please introduce this one.
Thank you, sir. We have a zone change request by Jenkins Oldham Development Company and this is at 3846 South and 5600 West. The rezon request is to change the use at that address and lot size and amount of 14.9 acres from agriculture, which is current, to R18 and R16.
Okay, thank you. Now, I open the public hearing regarding this application. Is there anyone who's come to speak on this matter? Okay, come forward to microphone. And anyone that comes to speak, by the way, please state your name and your full address for our minutes, please.
My name's Robert DeFay, 3802 South, 5600 West.
Excuse me, before you start, Robert, I might add that the Fays did send a letter to the council, which we all received and read and that is officially part of the minutes as well, so we do appreciate that letter. Feel free to add on--
Maybe I don't need to read the letter. I was just gonna make sure that the letter got to you folks.
We all got it a week ago. Anyone not read it? Okay, we have some good students here.
Okay.
They all read it.
Well, okay.
Anything you want to add?
No, but I think Richard may have something to add. We forgot to put in a letter.
Okay, and words of the great Bob Barker. Come on down.
Richard DeFay resides at 3876 South, 5600 West. I'm on the south end of this proposed development and I got a little concerned about the impact that the cars are gonna have on with this development on 5600. Right now, in the mornings, 6 o'clock, 7 o'clock, going north on 5600 West, the cars are backed up, clear up to my house for 35th South. In the evening, they're backed up from 35th, clear up to my house. And with 6,000 to 8,000 square foot lots, assuming that everybody has two cars nowadays, that's gonna put 110 more cars out on 5600 West with 55 lots. And if it was to be 10,000 square foot lots, that would drop it down to 92 cars and only 46 lots. So, I just wanted to-- that would be 18 less lots at 10,000 square foot. So, I just wanted to bring that to anybody's attention if nobody has thought of that impact as far as, you know, the cars on 56. Even though it's been widened, there's still an issue there. It goes to work time and coming home. And this is not to mention everything that's gonna be west of the Mountain View Quarter. Supposedly because of this road, they gotta have through there, there's gonna be quite a few cars coming out there. So, I just wanted to address that. Maybe they ought to be 10,000 square foot lots or maybe even 12,000. I don't know, but I think the 6,000 to 8,000 is really gonna be a problem.
Great, well, thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this application tonight? Order ends. Is the applicant here by chance? Would you like to say anything, sir, before we close the public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Carl Oldham with Jenkins at Alderman. I'm at 4500 South, 512 East, Murray, Utah. And I can understand Mr. DeFay's, you know, situation with the traffic, but it's-- to me, it's kind of insignificant on the amount of the cars, you know, going and out. They're gonna have that intermountain or that quarter going through that's gonna probably offset that eventually. And what we've done with that property is that we-- I think we've worked with the planners well as far as conforming to the long-range plan. What we've done is we've increased the 6,000 square foot lots, but I think on average about 6,500. And then the 8,000 square foot lots, I think on average about 9,000 square feet. So, we've actually went over and above what the minimums could be and so that's about all I gotta say.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You bet. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this topic this evening? Okay, and please come forward and state your name and address.
My name's Stone Wilkinson and I live at 3914 South Cliffhaven Lane, which is the subdivision Madison Place just to the south of this proposed subdivision. My only concern was, and I did talk to the zoning fellow, I can't even think of his name right now, but we had mentioned to him that if it made more of a consideration to make a road across the back of our subdivision by having us go in and by even thinking about taking roads into our subdivision, because there's roads that ended our subdivision towards the north, right where this is coming in, we would be totally against it. So, I don't know how that's ended up. I don't know if that's-- if there's any proposal or if that is any part of the subdivision or not, but our subdivision would be way against doing something like that, because we don't want to open that up. But if we did, a gate would have to be put in, because we're a gated community and we want to keep it. That way, we don't want to open it to another community. So, I don't know what the consideration has been there or not, but I just wanted to give our viewpoint. That's from our HWA Board.
Great, thank you. I'll direct that question to the staff. It's a good one. Regarding Madison Place, is there any connectivity to the proposed development?
Looking at the site plan as it is proposed, no, there would not be, but let me re-perfect just to make sure. Yep, nope, we're good.
Okay. Okay, is there any other comments in this comment period? Seeing none, I now close the public comment period and turn over to the council for their pleasure.
Mayor, I'd like to make a few comments. Prior to this meeting, we had a joint meeting with our planning commission to talk about the, kind of, the future of the city and different zoning and general plan. And as I look at that plan, we have very little space left for residential development. And currently in the city, we have a lot of development that are on small lots and it's my belief that with the very small amount of residential property that we will be able to develop in the future, that we need to be looking to larger lots to provide an opportunity for people who have grown up in the city and are looking for a place to stay in the city, but on a bigger piece of property, that we provide that opportunity for them. And so, I would not be in favor of this action.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rush?
Mayor, a comment and then I'll maybe make a motion to encourage some debate on this a little bit. But as Councilmember Vincent mentioned, we got a good primer in our previous meeting just talking about the general plan. And so, again, it beats all the things that we've seen on that as far as our long-range goals and I think Steve covered them fairly adequately, except for the point I want to bring out with from our tour of our housing stock as well as the report on it. And I did mention this, is that, you know, 50 percent of the houses in our city now are R17 or R18 and 64, almost two-thirds of what's in our city is R18 or less. And so, just to come along with Councilmember Vincent's point, you know, if we want to plan for changing demographics, you know, as well as provide housing for people at all different stages of life, you know, we've kind of hit the-- we've almost hit the max threshold of, you know, R16s, R17s and R18s. I think you can tell, the second point that, you know, I wanted to make is that I think you can tell by, you know, reading the minutes of the planning commission, struggled quite a bit, you know, with this one, is it being a large agricultural piece with a homeowners' association to one side and the Mountain View Quarter to another side. And when it came down to your zoning, you tell that it was a tough one, as it should be. And as it was pointed out, you know, in some of the issue papers by the applicant, that in some ways they're kind of in between a rock and a hard place with the Mountain View Quarter as well as 5600 West. But, you know, I say to that, that, you know, if you're stuck between a tough situation, that's where you really have to be creative and come up with some creative solutions. And if you're just gonna come to the city council and do line up the streets and kind of fit as many lots in as you want, you know, I'm to the point of where, yeah, it's gonna be R110 or maybe even R112 if you're not gonna try something creative. And so, as much as I would like to just make the motion that we just rezon this, you know, R112 and, you know, move on with it, you know, I agree with something that Councilmember Bueller said a few weeks ago to where if an applicant comes in and says he wants, you know, a certain type of zoning and we say, you know, no, it should probably be this or should probably be this, it's probably, you know, a little more productive on all ends to just, instead of, you know, trying to get this into, you know, a real zoning discussion on it, to allow them the opportunity to go back and make it work or bring an application based on some of the comments that are made here that are maybe more in line, you know, with the city council. So, instead of, you know, me trying to, you know, guess the quality of the project on it, Mayor, I would just move for a denial of ordinance 1345.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second to this motion?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to deny this application. Is there any further discussion to this motion or questions for the staff? Okay, seeing none. I think we got to call the question. Let's do this one and roll call vote, please, Ms. McHenry.
Mr. Benson.
And again, voting aye is voting in favor of the motion, which is to deny these two ordinances.
The one ordinance.
The first one, sorry, the first one, yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Rush?
Aye.
Mr. Rush?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye. So, the council has unanimously denied ordinance 13-45. I'll just say from my point, we have been trying to get larger lots in different places and so when we see that R14 zoning, or excuse me, R16. Yeah, it's an R14, but the lot size will be 65. That's still-- that's a step backwards from where we've really tried to go as a city and we have had some high-quality multifamily projects and transit areas and different things. But as far as residential, single-family neighborhoods, that'd be a step backwards for our community and the council is unanimous this evening on that. We do have warden-- excuse me, resolution 13-158 to consider, again, which is related to this one.
Mayor, I guess it would be prudent to also move to deny resolution 13-158. Is that an agreement?
Okay, any discussion to that one? Obviously, this resolution doesn't make a lot of sense without ordinance 1345 in place, so all in favor of denying resolution 13-158, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that one is also unanimous. Mr. Pyle, we have a couple of resolutions tonight, 13-159.
Thank you, sir. This is the interlocal cooperative agreement between the city and Salt Lake County that would set forth the terms under which we would be building the-- and allowed to build the pedestrian bridge slated for construction across the Jordan River.
Okay, thank you. Council, any questions on this one or a motion?
Move for approval of resolution 13-159.
Second.
Okay, thank you both. Any questions to this motion? Okay, all in favor of approval of this interlocal agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Any to oppose? Okay, that was unanimous. Mr. Pyle, 13-160, please.
Thank you, sir. This is for the purchase of a piece of ground and it's a small piece of ground that would be from Canaccot Copper and this is in relation to the 7200 West Wyden project at approximately 2484 South and 7200 West.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or motion on this item?
I would move for approval of 13-160, seeing as we've already used the property and done what we were supposed to do on that widening, we need to own what we have.
Makes sense.
Second.
Thank you both. Any discussion in this motion? Just to note for you scouts who are here working on your badges, we also meet each Tuesday at 4:30 at the room next door in kind of a more informal study meeting where we go over all the items that'll be on the next week's agenda. So, everything we are discussing today, we've had at least one week to consider and so even some of these more important decisions, I understand that we don't make lightly and we have given all these some good thought. For motion, resolution 13-160, we have a motion for approval and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That also passes. We do have one item of new business tonight. Mr. Pyle?
Thank you, sir. This is to consider final plot approval for the villages at Westridge Phase Two. This is a Henry Walker Homes project located 5600 West Lake Ridge Drive.
Okay, thank you. Council, what's your pleasure on this one?
I just have a few comments I want to make. When we were going through this process of, I don't know, a couple of year, year, year two ago on this piece of property, we had this discussion about these mansion homes that were really multi-tenant homes, but had the feel of a large home. And I'm struggling with this because the elevations that we have here, just they don't fit that description. They don't look any different than just a standard fourplex townhome. And so, I don't know whether we deny it based on the plan elevations, but I certainly am not comfortable moving forward with this project till we see a better and different product that would go up on this property, so I just needed to make that known. I would concur with what Councilman Vincent said, you know, this doesn't look like a mansion to me.
You know, how many mansions have all their garages out front?
Mr. Pyle, it's a procedural question. If the council feels that this P U D application is pretty good and almost there, but not quite there, is it procedurally better to deny it or to postpone it and allow them to tweak it a bit before a final vote's taken?
I would ask that we continue it, but I would, if I could, just make the comment that first, completely agree that the term mansion does not apply to these structures. However, and we may just have a memory situation here going on, because this project has lasted for a number of years and in fact started first consideration in the teeth of the last recession and didn't go anywhere for a long time. And as you'll remember, we went through a number of conceptual designs that included a whole bunch of different kinds of development that were there. This particular phase of the subject was presented to the council some time ago. I don't actually remember how long ago that was. And these structures and elevations are largely, pretty much representative of what was shown to council at the time. So, it's, although I agree with you, this certainly doesn't look like a mansion to me either. And maybe we got a labeling problem here from what the developer put on there originally. These are pretty much what you were shown in terms of size and exterior elevation.
And maybe we need to review the minutes, Mr. Pyle, because I kind of remember that too and remember the same discussion, but wait a minute, this is all, oh, well, we'll come back with something a lot, so just like what we were saying, but, you know, it's gonna be the size, but we're gonna make it a lot nicer looking and then we still don't see that.
So, maybe we should, if the council's uncomfortable at this point, just continue that and we can kind of review that discussion. Last, let me ask Ms. Cottle if she's got any, if you had any newer or comparative elevations than what we've got right now?
Jake just informed me that we do have two new-- I don't know whether they're new, but newer elevations that he can put up on the screen if he'd like to do that.
Okay, let's at least do that, yeah. Yeah, let's do that, just so you can at least see what those look like. I haven't seen them myself, so I don't know what they--
Well, and I remember going back to that discussion that we talked, that there were a couple of elevations of some of these mansion homes out in Daybreak that were dramatically different. So, I do remember seeing something different than this.
Right, and as I pointed out last week, at this time was when we were contemplating the Hunter Town Center and we had some concept plans of those. And so, my memory of it was, hey, when you're going through this plan and we want to make it more trans-oriented development, that was kind of an integral piece of the negotiating or the kind of the give and take, like you can have some density here, but we'd like to see some of this product incorporated like we've had planned for our Hunter Town Center, which those elevations are, you know, drastically, drastically different. And it was, it was an integral part, like I said, of the process we went through it, was, you know, was having this type of product, this type of home in it to allow for some of the other densities without-- in the other phases of the project.
And to that comment, it was kind of putting myself in mind of maybe as for part of this discussion, it might be a little more helpful to remind everybody and be able to show you what the overall development looked like and what the whole mix of those products were as opposed to just this phase. And if the council would prefer to do that, we certainly could bring that back as well. Ms. Cottle informed me that this is what the-- or this elevation that's before you is what the developer came in more of a finished representation of what they would be building. The original one, the pencil drawing one that you saw beforehand, is the original one that you had seen, kind of more in line--
But it is still--
More in line with what Councilman Bueller had remembered.
It is still the same. You've got five garages out there in front and I had trouble even finding the front doors on the one that we were sent, because the garages were overwhelming.
In their defense on these, I mean, when you're having three units in a single-- In their defense on these, I mean, when you're having three units in a single structure with garages, which is a requirement we've asked them to have, you're gonna see the garages, you can't alley-load everything on a property like this, and these are not too dissimilar from what you do see at daybreak and other parts of the valley. Any other questions or a motion by the council?
Mayor, I would just move a continuance to date uncertain on application P U D four twenty thirteen. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue this item. Let's roll call vote this one too, Ms. McHenry, please.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Hume?
Aye.
Mr. Rushden?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Aye.
Aye, all right, just checking, so unanimously, we would like to continue this, and I just want to add that we do appreciate what Henry Walker Homes is doing to create a quality development there, and they are getting very close, and there's, I hope you heard the feedback today that we can tweak it, and again, it's not dead, but we'll look forward to seeing this again very soon. Thank you. Item ten is our consent agenda. Council, these are usual and sundry items lumped together in our consent agenda, any motions here?
Mayor, I'd move approval of the five items in our consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, thank you, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those pass unanimously. Any need for executive session tonight from anybody? Okay, we'll come to item twelve, which is two-way journey.